...of council to order. Approval of the agenda. Councilor Norberg.
That the September 6th, 2022, regular council meeting agenda be adopted as presented.
Secondaire. Council Madzinski. All in favor? Okay. Adoption of the minutes, June 2nd, 2022, special meeting of council minutes. Recommendation, Councilor Norberg.
As presented.
Secondaire, Council Madzinski. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Carry. Uh, June 17th, 2022, special meeting of council minutes. Recommendation, Councilor Howe?
As presented.
Secondaire. Council Madzinski. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? June 27th, 2022, special meeting of council minutes. Take the recommendation, Council Madzinski.
Proofed as presented.
Secondaire, Councilor Howe? Any errors or omissions? All in favor? July 25th, 2022, special meeting of council minutes, recommendations. Councilor Howe?
As presented.
Secondaire, Council Madzinski. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Carry. August 2nd, 2022, regular council meeting minutes and recommendation, Councilor Lehman.
Proofed as presented.
Secondaire, Council Madzinski. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Carry. August 4th, 2022, special meeting of council minutes, recommendation, Councilor Norberg.
As presented.
Secondaire, Council Madzinski. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Carry. August 9th, 2022, special meeting of council minutes, recommendation, Councilor Lehman.
Proofed as presented.
Okay. Secondaire, Councilor Norberg. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Carry. Any business arising for the minutes? Counsel? Staff? Delegations, conditions, we have YMCA of Northern BC. CEO Amanda Alexander and Lynette Mickelson. To present on the YMCA childcare programs and services. And their partnerships across Northern BC. Please. Welcome, welcome to Tumbler Ridge.
Thank you. Super appreciate being here, my name is Amanda Alexander, I'm CEO of YMCA of Northern BC. And it's my pleasure to present to you around the YMCA of Northern BC as well as childcare services. Okay.
Is it a sound thing too?
No, I'm just wondering if you're going to.
Make a sledge.
Next slide? Yes, please. So, a little bit about us, we're rooted in Prince George and have a leadership team that is responsible for creating portfolios. So, Donna appearing today is around childcare. But we also have a portfolio of health, fitness and aquatics, which is often what YMCA is known for. As well as community health, which is essentially our community programs, health service programs that include many services for youth, youth employment, youth health. And recreation for long-term care facilities. Next slide, please. Right, so a little bit of an overview about what we're going to be talking tonight is who we are, childcare, capital projects that we've engaged in, who childcare, some of the pieces that we struggle with in terms of recruitment, areas of opportunity and an opportunity for discussion. Next slide, please. Sorry. So YMCA's in British Columbia have been around for approximately 136 years, so we have a lot of history in our province and experience to draw from. We are really focused on supporting and finding safe places to learn and grow and helping individuals and families reach their full potential. There are currently five YMCA's across our province, Greater Vancouver, Northern BC, Vancouver Island, interior and Campbell's. YMCA of Northern BC's mission is a charity dedicated to strengthening foundations of community. Let's unpack that a little bit more. So we do this in three key ways, promoting healthy living, helping children, families and seniors thrive and fostering belonging connection and inclusion. This, although it is a little difficult for me, is what we affectionately call our pinwheel, as these are really big lofty goals that I speak to. So, kind of just drawing on a couple of different examples is helping children, families and seniors thrive. One of the ways in which we measure that is the number of opportunities that children have to enter into childcare so that they are having their best opportunity at being prepared for school. So childcare is for us important in terms of having opportunity for parents to be able to work and caregivers to work. But also really importantly is about promoting early learning. A national curriculum that is best practice designed to achieve that. So we know with the number of children that we, ideally with the number of children that we serve, as we increase that, we're promoting that early learning for children. Hence, helping children and seniors families thrive. In terms of promoting healthy living, another example of that might be around inclusive services or services to chronic disease programs. So for example, we run a cardiac rehabilitation program, healthy hip and knee program. So we know that we're being able to do those earlier generation programs, but not necessarily health authorities have the capacity to run. We're going to help promote healthy living within the communities. Next slide, please. Our future, our vision is around communities in Northern BC being vibrant and healthy because children, families and seniors belong, grow, thrive and lead. Really this is our vision and how we execute it is really done through that pinwheel that I described. Next slide, please. To give you a bit of scope around our YMCA childcare locations. 10 years ago, we were located only in Prince George. We had the opportunity to respond to needs as communities wished and you can see the scope of the communities that we serve. Next slide, please. This speaks a little bit to kind of the many areas in which we work. And so, early learning and childcare, but also camp is a really important piece of work that we do. Facilitating connection to nature for kids is super important as we know that with technology, there's so much less impact, so much more impacts and reduced opportunities. We do youth engagement, so we are the lead operator, for example, the Foundry Youth Health Center in Prince George. We were the first of five pilot sites across the province to deliver foundry services. There are now 17 foundries across the province with a vision of having a foundry in every, in every community, which is an opportunity for youth to access services in the moment. Co-located, collaborated, for example. We also deliver employment services for youth, again really wanting to foster the opportunity that if you connect a youth to being able to have those equal opportunity accesses to employment, how much or how that will provide equity in terms of future opportunities. Next slide, please. So a little bit about our history, next slide, please. We have been around for almost 60 years in Northern BC, one more year to go, which is pretty exciting. And so, there's been a lot of, a lot of growth, a lot of rapid growth. And so, we started licensed childcare just shortly after we became an incorporation in 1975. And in 2014, we became the YMCA of Northern BC. And that was really in relationship to hearing from communities, northern communities. But they, in particularly where mainly it started was in the District of Van der Hoof. They began to recognize the importance of childcare within their community. That really came from a place of understanding that in order for community residents to live, work and play in their community, they were losing people because one person could get employment, but the other person couldn't. And, and what, as we've seen over the course of these years, so that's actually become even more significant. Because of the, you know, hard to hire folks, we're having to do, we're doing different things to be able to keep people in our community. And it's made a significant difference and in fact, Mayor of Van der Hoof just recently asked this question and he could name off specific people that have stayed in his community because of the intentionality around childcare. In this year, we are very much anticipating our recent or upcoming unification with three of our YMCA's. This is something we've been working on for five years, we'll become the YMCA for a longer, YBC. The Vancouver YMCA and the Campbell's YMCA, very committed to regional services. In fact, part of what we're trying to execute is greater administrative support in our back of house systems. We realized that we could only do as well, being the size that we are, we would have exponential infrastructure support by becoming some part of something that's bigger, but also with the intention of being more nimble to serve more communities in this area. Next slide, please. So I just wanna, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Lynette Mickelson, who has directly responsible for the significant childcare, childcare growth. But what I wanted to reinforce to you is that really from a mission perspective, we've seen childcare just have such a significant outcome around, around retention of employees in communities, around, around early learning outcomes. Those two pieces that are mission critical to our work. And so, in the context of even two, three years ago, there wasn't the same kind of burning platform around ensuring that we, that people who left our communities could come back to our, or other people to replace them. We know that's not the case at all. We also know from a mission perspective that the YMCA is incredibly strategic and well-designed with its national curriculum and best practices that have years and years of experience to ensure the best possible early learning outcomes for children. So with that, I would probably wrap up.
Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to be here tonight and see a familiar face, thanks. So just when I became aware of the need and Tumbler Ridge has a little bit of history, we are a partner with School District 59 in Dawson Creek. And they actually asked me to come and, and to meet and see what was happening in the community and so happily did, did that, as that's part of our mission. And from there, have decided to come forward and kind of share with you a little bit about who we are and what we've done across the north and then see how, you know, what the potentials are here in Tumbler Ridge around partnership as well. So, I'm not going to go through all of these, but I can show you this slide and the next slide. We've had exponential growth since 2007. And so much of this was only made possible from, honestly, through partnerships. So the District of Van der Hoof, School District 60 in Fort, when we moved to Fort St. John. In Fort St. James, there's another nonprofit that had built childcare, but didn't operate childcare. And so came to us and said, can you come and help? And so, so we operate their childcare center as well. So yeah, last year, we moved again into Dawson Creek from, from Chetwin and I'm not sure if you've heard the rumblings, but we're opening 12 of them, 12 new spaces in Chetwin as well. Hopefully we're breaking ground this fall and they'll open in the spring. So have had just an incredible opportunity to work with, with others, others that are, you know, in, know the importance of childcare and to really just work to, to meet each community's needs. I'd say that's one thing that is important and we always try to keep in mind is that what works in one community doesn't necessarily work in another community. And I think that's really helped us to grow it and be successful. Next slide. So as Amanda shared, we're currently serving six communities and right now with, with staff and we can have 893 children in our care on a given day. Yeah, and growing. So, just, it's, you know, an honor and a privilege, but it's also a huge responsibility and one we don't take lightly. What really have the future, was children's early experiences and how they really do shape the whole future and their future health and all of those things. So, next slide. Just wanted to highlight and I'll go through these quickly because I really want to give you time for questions, but our partnerships around spaces. So, new spaces funding that's changed over the years, it used to be $500,000 and then it went to a million and now it's like, went to 3 million, then it was per space is, is where we're at now. But, so first and foremost was our Massey Drive location in Prince George. And, and then we, from there, we moved to the Highland and we can go forward, in 2007. We did this one in partnership with MCFD through the capital funding. And then in 2009, we partnered with our School District 57 in Prince George. And that's the next slide, I think, and we opened the Highland Family Development Center. And you know what was, I guess this was really the start of our learning and our passion and what we found at Highland that was really mission kind of critical would be that we care for children zero to 12 at this site. And it's, it became wonderful. We have people that come with their babies and they grow all the way through and the children get to know, you know, the teachers before they move on, there's just less transitions, even when they head off to kindergarten, then they come back to that same program. There's just this whole family feel. And it really was just a lot of delving into seeing success, their feeling connectedness, seeing staff retention, all of those things. And kind of going, so what's different? It was like that adding that, that, that family model, that just made such a difference in Highland actions design. So you could see through some of the rooms to the other rooms and those types of things. So that was kind of our, our flagship. And then from there, next slide, we actually opened La Debois, which is a French immersion school that had kind of an annex that had been shut down because it used to be a shop spilling. So, you know, partnered with the school district and converted that space and, and I would say it was an added bonus because we're now located at that site on school grounds. So you can make that transition even smoother when they hit kindergarten. From there, I believe our next site was Van der Hoof. So, it takes a village to raise little people and that includes all of us. And so what was unique, Van der Hoof was Integris Community, well, so the Integris Credit Union was a partner as well in selling their building at a reduced cost to the District of Van der Hoof. And we built, purpose-built childcare through, through some government funding, the infant toddler portion of it. And, and it's operating, it's a center of community with community spaces as well. And it's just, as Amanda spoke to, made such a difference. But again, it was really those partnerships that made that a possibility and everybody working together for, for that bigger picture. Next slide, this is our Center of Fort St. James, it's lakefront, I don't know if you can see that out the window, but that's pretty cool. Have a couple of people saying, oh, retire there. And again, that was another partnership that was done. And I can go ahead. With School District 60, we actually entered into some kind of newer to us pieces. And so, part of BC Hydro's mitigation plan on Site C was that they had different things they needed to do for the community, which you would be well, well aware of. And one of the pieces that they did was contribute, I don't want to quote the amount, but a big sum of money towards the building of this space. And then we also accessed, or School District accessed, MCFD's funding. And so really what's unique here and what kind of started a bit of a trend is that so many of the seats at this site are priority access for BC Hydro or the First Nations in Treaty Six. So that kind of was, it was a start of, they'll, they'll hold those priority spaces for 10 years type thing and then they're all community. So they gave some to the community for sure, like about honestly half. And then half were for them and we have a, we never have empty seats. If we don't have a BC Hydro baby on the waitlist or a child, we fill up the community and we just kind of do the balancing act. It's been super great, meets everybody's needs. From there, we continued on our partnership with the School District Six, oh no, I guess we moved to Chetwin next. Chetwin was similar to Tumbler Ridge in, in the way that we were approached by the Childcare Society that was operating there. And they had a building and they were incredibly busy parents that were doing this, trying to run the childcare center off the sides of their desks at work or nights and those kinds of things. And it was really challenging because you get people kind of into it and knowing it and then they move on because their children move on and those types of things. So they came to us and said, would you be interested? And we really started those discussions. It was a bit of a, a mix because they had to give up their lease and we had to reapply through an open process through Northern Lights College. But we, we did that work and are happy to, to be there now for quite a while. And like I said, we've since opened school age childcare in Chetwin, as well as we'll be opening a toddler childcare there in the spring, so that's pretty exciting for their community. And then I think we were at Ann Roberts Young, so another school, the new school that was built in Fort St. John with our purpose-built childcare, zero to 12 onsite here as well. And this one was a partnership really with access, some priority access to the school district themselves because they didn't receive enough funding to cover all of the costs, as well as Northern Health gave a chunk of money into this project and they had some priority access spaces. So, again, it's full and thriving and many, still lots of need, that's for sure. And the next slide. So opening this past, I guess this past February, we opened in Prince George Park House Care and Learning Center. And Park House is a partnership with the City of Prince George, actually, they did a childcare study and in our downtown, we really realized there really wasn't a lot of access to spaces and there was a big need. So we've opened 85 spaces there. And this is the part of the infant toddler room, the mat rooms are kind of not in view, but really I think just an opportunity to, to plug a little bit about our belief in creating home-like environments and, and places where children feel welcome and invited and, and safe. Leave some of that for later, but just, I think this showcases that well with that, with the neutral colors and all of those sorts of things. Next slide. So opening any day now, probably October, in Fort St. John, we're going to pilot with Northern Health. Super innovative approach of trying to get to an extended hours childcare center, so 6:30 AM until 7:30 PM. Northern Health is, is on board to fund this, but the, the hard thing for childcare operators is there's just such risk, right? Like if you don't have a space filled and you still have staff and all of those sorts of things. So they have partnered with us, we're going to try to pilot this. And super excited to see what the outcomes are, we've got some real strategic goals in mind and to see how, because we do know that that's an issue for a lot of northern communities, shipwork, those types of things. So, yeah, looking forward to being able to report back on how this goes from here for now and to talk about what the learnings. So as Amanda shared, we do have a national curriculum called Playing to Learn. I think the most important pieces of our curriculum are that honestly is child-centered. So really we, based on children's interests and the educators are trained to scaffold and extend that interest to really ensure that children, you know, are engaged in their learning and, and interested. And so we're not, the theme that, you know, a lot of people would use a theme base where it's fall, so we're doing bears and apples, it doesn't work like that. Sometimes we actually celebrate Christmas in our programs in January because they're really important to children after Christmas happened. That's when, when they kind of want to continue to play or those types of things. So that's kind of a part of what sets us apart, along with the support that we get so nationally across our Y's. We are, we have the training that we have area trainers now, but they used to come out from Toronto, but they do promote and assess our programs. So on top of licensing, we get national assessments annually. Covid's of course put it into that for a couple of years, but the other thing that we really believe in is professional development of our own staff. I, I think that we often forget who cares for the caregiver and that's a piece of, of the puzzle of not only recruiting staff into this field, that's a very challenging field, but also keeping them there. So we do close four days a year for professional development training for our staff. And just really, you know, what part of our strategic plan is to be an employer of choice and now we're looking at how we can do that in more meaningful ways, our staff have pensions and benefits and sick time and extended holiday, you know, versus the standard and those kinds of things. So trying to really care for those people that care for our most precious little people. So, we can go to the next slide. So we also do that in school age, a little differently in school age because the requirements of school age care providers are, are different than early childhood educators. But really, there's still an importance to, to quality and making sure that children are still in that safe environment and really focusing on building connections with, with kids that age and, and helping them to build friendships and become community members. And really kind of help them to just almost the leadership skills of learning to, what, what do they want to do and okay, how do we, how do we plan for that together and those types of things. So that's kind of the difference in our school age programs. So lots of, you know, trying to do lots of training on bullying awareness and all of those kinds of things. But, yeah, that's, that's kind of our national standard there as well as, as the training. So, I can go next slide. Talked a little bit about all of the things we do. One of the things we've done over the north has used the BC Jobs Grant to, to pay for people's education. So we apply on behalf of early childhood educators and so they are doing the work themselves for sure. But so they don't have that, the cost over and above. So that's really been strategic in helping us to grow our, our pool of early childhood educators. Often people will start in school age and then work towards earning their certificate, that sort of thing, so they can be employed, they can be engaged. We can continue to grow their education. And then I talked about the other pieces that we currently offer. Go on to the next slide. So I think one of the pieces that I didn't state that's been a true success for us too is that we are currently operating, we were chosen one of 52 operators in the first round of prototype funding, which is the 10, now called the $10 day funding in 2018. So since 2018, we've been operating a $10 day site. And most recently this winter, I guess, we actually applied for and received, we're successful on four applications, so four additional applications, so Chetwin, one in Fort St. John, one in Van der Hoof, and a second one in Prince George for the $10 day funding. So incoming here and knowing that we were coming before you, one of the things I really didn't want to miss out on for the community was that $10 day application that closed on August the 18th. So we have supported your childcare board to put forward an application. Nobody's heard yet whether it will be successful or not, but as childcare moves into, you know, the ministry of education that we are now, but recognizing that importance of the early years and the early start, I think there's super great opportunities, but it's also a great opportunity when you think about $10 a day, $200 a month for your full-time childcare, what that does for a family, right? And, and what that does for people who aren't making the largest wages and those types of things. So it's been super life-changing for, for some of our families and so I'm so hopeful that, that that would be, that they will be successful. I know that I have looked at some before and after school care space here with School District 59 at your elementary school. Put out a very last minute, and I mean last minute, kind of like survey, like anybody interested kind of thing. And it wasn't a lot of uptake, so they want to revisit that this fall here and just see what the need might be. And then of course, you have preschool operating and Group 3 to 5 that's operating right now. There's always that infant toddler need, but it's, you know, not only are the ratios to staff so tiny, it's, it's the extra qualifications as well. So I believe that School District 59 has undertaken with some partners and some coming from Shell and a couple others and needs assessment, including Tumbler Ridge again, just trying to gather some data. I think they're updating that a little bit. We should have that back out soon and just kind of take a look at where, where the real needs are. I also think your childcare board has some, some really concrete numbers on how many people are sitting on a waitlist. on how many people are sitting on a waitlist. And the waitlists are, they're difficult, right? Because some people doing fall are going to go on a waitlist. They know they're never gonna, what's the point? I know in a lot of our programs, it's, we tell people if you're thinking about getting pregnant, to actually get your name on a waitlist because lots of times kids are two and a half years old before they're getting that now. Like it's just, the need is so real, right? And how challenging for all of our moms. So I guess I'll stop talking, but I really kind of just want to know where you're at and give opportunity for questions and just discussion.
Again, thank you very much. Just wanted to, can we zoom that down to see if Mayor Bertrand can, we can hear him? He was texting me saying he doesn't think we can hear him.
As long as we've got the slides, yep.
Yeah, we're good.
He tried to jump in, I guess there's a thing earlier. Mayor Bertrand?
Can you hear me, Alvin?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Hello, Lynette. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Appreciate your presentation. I just have a couple of questions. I'm curious if you've had any discussions with our Childcare Society Board? As well as, can you mention the, you had spoken earlier about the amalgamation of renaming to YBC? I was just wanting to know if you, or if you could mention that or explain that as well.
Sure, I'll take the first one. So I have been in contact with your childcare board. In fact, I jumped on a call this week, Tuesday night maybe? Wednesday, I think it was Tuesday night. And had an opportunity to share a little bit with them and to meet some of the board members that I hadn't previously met, as well as I had the opportunity to speak to the staff on Wednesday night. I got invited into a staff meeting just to chat a little bit. So, so yeah, those discussions are definitely underway. I think it's more around, how do we, yeah, how do we move forward? Is this something the community needs and wants? And how do we move more, more in those partnership ways that we had kind of spoken about before?
And then in terms of your unification question, we are waiting for CRA approval, which we're anticipating to happen shortly. And we have been working over the last five years around how we knit together our governance so that there is, we reflect the communities, the diverse communities that we serve. So we have essentially a board in waiting that comes from across our province with additional board members that are in process right now of selection. We are working with Deloitte, who has supported the United Way through their unification around knitting together our backup house system. So they're able to provide some roadmaps for us that will identify the knitting together of financial systems, human resources. We make sure people get paid, that we can have money come in, money come out, some of the very basic things that we need to do this, you know, large-scale piece of work. But we're quite confident that that will happen in the next, the next few months.
Thank you for that. Just want to state, thank you again for coming in. I'm very excited for the opportunities in the future and look forward to working with you. And I'd love to join you both with the childcare board for the evening as soon as possible.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Norberg. Thank you Deputy Mayor Kalkup. Thank you very much for coming in, Amanda, Lynette. Lynette, we've been talking for a while and Amanda, I'm glad to finally be able to meet you. And I just wanted to say, like, it's been, it's been great working with your organization and Lynette. Because it's apparent that you're an organization that really cares about quality childcare and the feeling that we're getting, you know, with the Children's Center Board and myself is that you're, you've taken on this request from the SC 59 and really taking it on, taking a good look at Tumbler Ridge and wanting to help. So I really appreciate that because, you know, there's a point in your presentation, you said that you know people who, who are staying in communities because of the intentionality they have around childcare. Right now, I'd say we're at the opposite. I could tell you multiple people who are not working right now due to childcare, people who are planning on leaving Tumbler Ridge due to childcare. So, and you know, these are professionals in our community. And when you're a small community like ours, small number of people make big differences, right? So we're, you know, so thank you for, for coming in. So we're talking a lot about partnerships. To, to, to be, to cut through it, like what do you need from us? Like how can we continue this partnership forward? In our discussions previously, you, you might be looking for commitments from us. Like what can we do to help us move this partnership forward in offering Child Center Bridge?
Thanks, Chris. I think part of it is getting together to understand what the true need is and what the true richness and seeing what that looks like and then taking a look at where you're currently operating. And I am aware that you've applied to the province twice unsuccessfully. Like see, and I understand that the challenge is because they're looking at new spaces versus the fact that you've already got spaces operating. So that that's a bit of a challenge as well. You know, when I first came in, I, maybe in my rose-colored glasses, sometimes like, you know, I saw some potential at the school, which I spoke of in terms of getting a school age program off the ground. And then obviously, we want to make sure in a small community, we're working together with the districts and we're not both offering the same programs that swamp one, you know, one survives and one sinks type thing. So like offsetting so that the community has more offerings. Those kinds of things are really important parts of our discussions. And then around where, where the current Childcare Society is sitting. And then, you know, there, I want to be cautious that I certainly don't mean to offend anybody, but I would say in terms of quality, things like proper napping rooms and things like that, there are pieces that don't exist there that I would say aren't just quality for the children, they're quality for the staff as well, right? In terms of being able to care for children. So thinking of infants and toddlers and the most children we've ever put together in one little room might be six. And that's because you don't want Joey waking up Suzie or, right? With those types of things. So there are some pieces there that, that I really think, you know, whether that's new spaces, renovated spaces, I am not quite sure. I don't know, I guess I'm here just to kind of learn and to see and to see how we can proceed. That's pretty transparent on my part of where we're at. Just wanting, we're passionate about Northern B.C. and about families wanting to be in Northern B.C. And yeah, I just, I think it's just starting the conversations and that's kind of why we're here is just to say we're here. And you know, we understand that Tumbler Ridge kind of didn't know the why existed in this capacity. I really want to make you aware and just see how we can come alongside and support.
Councilor Norberg. Thank you Deputy Mayor, thank you for that. So that sort of gets me into our next one. So information, I know you spoke to it a little bit and we had our task force meeting today about childcare. And the plan still is that SC 59 is going to release a survey for us in Tumbler Ridge. We spoke with Gloria Cleve and Diane about making sure that we're having a targeted Tumbler Ridge need survey. And we're going to promote that and get as many people to give us a good picture of what's going on. Because you did hit the nail on the head in that word of mouth is strong, especially in small communities. And people aren't on waitlists because they already know there's no, there's no space. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to bother. So with, with the building to suit or creating functional spaces for, for your centers, you spoke a little bit about priority access spaces. So can you give me an idea what that would look like in terms of organizations, groups securing spaces for, for like, is it capital funding? Would it be like a yearly subscription so they need to pay for a space the entire time? And where I'm going with this is that if, because we do have a space, could we potentially renovate it? And that amount of, we can maybe get some funders involved there and they can keep some spaces or we can keep some spaces for our staff or for SC 59 or Northern Health. What would that sort of look like? Is that pretty open-ended?
It really is open-ended. So it kind of depends on the scope and size of the project, right? Some of what the dollar figures are. But I can, yeah, I think, you know, how many funders? Like so probably identifying what the true costs are and then the operating costs as well, right? So are those going to be able to be offset by parent fees? Or are those over and above? Let's face it, you can only ask parents for so much at this point anyways. As the province comes more on board with, with supporting, that, that may change for communities. But right now, that hasn't. So yeah, really, it is, it is open-ended around what that need is. I mean, staff recruitment is also going to be a challenge, right? So I think that it's really important to have the big vision, but I think it's also really important to say, here's where we're starting. And then how do we get to the big vision, right? So, you know, for the first time, all of those listings that you saw of childcare spaces, when we opened Park House this year, I had to be okay that I opened at 75%, right? So, and it was okay and it is okay. But like normally, I wouldn't have been okay with that prior to COVID. I would have been like, are you kidding me? We're going to do this? And I was just like, there's enough crisis and like, people are stretched enough during COVID and staff and our centers with, if someone's out sick now, right? Like you have to see all those great things we've learned and just having to give some support to the fact that people are really challenged. Employers are really challenged to manage and keep their staff well. So really want to, you know, same with the pilot that we're doing in Fort St. John. Like for me, it's about starting something that's appropriate and then having a larger vision. So.
So growing momentum on priority placement and employers are increasingly interested, particularly Northern Health. When, first time it opened up COVID, Lynette and I came and you know, the first story, you know, geographically was coming into Chetwind and the mayor saying, I know we've got closures because our nurses can't get childcare. And, and it was, you know, for us like heart-wrenching to hear, well, you can't have an ER open, right? You can't have an ICU? That's not acceptable. And really, like, we feel so strongly that northern communities deserve equitable access to all services, very much so healthcare. And so industry, as Lynette talked about, have, have had a vested interest. And so really, those are some key players as well. Districts have as well that can contribute in order that we can create a space that can actually become, that's well-suited for childcare, that's going to meet those needs. So it really depends, as Lynette said, it's community by community, who's interested? How, how can we collectively facilitate these conversations? And building, again, on what Lynette said, the richness of partnerships can actually get us a really, you know, fabulous product that really works ideally for the community of Tumbler Ridge.
Counselor Lehman and Counselor Howe.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I have a couple of questions. I have a little bit of a difficulty understanding why, when we applied for the grants unsuccessfully, it makes a difference having existing spaces and new spaces? Because obviously, we're trying to create new spaces because there aren't enough old spaces. So I don't understand why, because you want to put in new spaces, it would seem to be more difficult creating new spaces than it is to somehow keep the old spaces. I don't know how that works. That to me seems to be, I just can't wrap my head around. And the other thing is, this priority idea, I think it would work very well because I mean, you're looking, like you say, Northern Health, School District 59, Kanuma. I mean, there's a whole bunch that would benefit from this. And I know, I mean, to give spaces away, some people would complain. But the thing is, if you don't give those spaces away, you may not have any. So it's, it's a catch-22. If you don't, you're not going to have enough space because you need the extra money in order to be able to operate. So it's kind of a tough problem. But I think there should be enough potential candidates to take advantage of, of that perk. And also, like you're, you're talking about staffing. That seems to be a problem right across everything these days because there's just not enough people. And how are you going to find them? And, you know, if you do, and like you say, your, you know, professional development, that's all going to help. And hopefully, they, when you do get them, if you do get them, they decide to stay. But it, there's a lot of problems that we have to overcome in order for this to work. So hopefully, if everybody can sort of work together and try to solve this, we can make a little bit of headway.
Absolutely. I think that you have, well, the Dawson Creek Campus actually has an early childhood education program, of which they actually bring in quite a few international students. So I think there's some opportunities there too, right? Having those graduates come to the community and maybe support them to come to the community and stay and work and get their permanent residency and all those kinds of things as well. So I think there's opportunities, but I think it needs to really, you're absolutely right. We all need to work together and have a really fluid system that, that, that starts that process.
With respect to your question around the granting process, can only apply for funds, successfully apply for funds for new spaces. So the government won't provide any funding for renovating existing spaces. So lots of opportunity, but it needs to be over and above the spaces that currently operate.
Counselor Howe and then Counselor Majewski.
No, I've got to say, I've been in here for eight years and this is the most positive presentation that I've ever heard. This is the first time, I think, I've ever been in here where I was like, wow, this, this group is actually going to come in and help immediately. Because we need help with childcare. There is no doubt in my mind. We are losing teachers, nurses, equipment operator, trade people. I'm just going through the list in my mind of people. Try not to repeat everything everybody else said. I wrote down a whole page of stuff here that I wanted to touch on. But the need is there desperately. The, the problem in politics for us is those naysayers in the community that come and say, why should my tax dollars go to pay for this? And that is up to the next group that will be in here to have to explain to the people that if your tax dollars don't go to pay for it, you're not going to have nurses here. You're not going to have people teach your kids. You're not going to have people to come operate the equipment in the mines. We're not going to have any jobs, anything here. This is a critical piece of the infrastructure that we're missing in Tumbler Ridge. We need a professional company to come in. We need somebody YMCA is nationally recognized. I, I think it's, it's fantastic. I love the thing that you talked on, touched about professional development and some unique things that you would do to retain staff. Succession planning is something that's super critical in that position as well. We had somebody who was in here and when that person left, we were in a real bad way right after that. Succession planning wasn't accounted for through, however that happened, but it happened. And to me, the priority access thing is an excellent idea for us to get in with the Kanuma Coles, B.C. Hydro, Northern Health, CNRL, Capital Power, and go in and say, listen, you know, my vision is short-term, long-term. Short-term, we have a place now that we need help with getting it under control. I'd love to see that entire area turn into a weight room. Always have, always will. And I would love to see a new childcare facility built. And if we go to the government with a hand-up, not hand-out approach, and we go, listen, we've got a million dollars in funding. We're from Kanuma and from our DTR and this, and we need another, what was the childcare building? 2.2, 2.5, 4 million? You come in, we have 50% of it and you go to the government and say, listen, we want to build this thing next to TRE. We want to utilize the gym for the YMCA after hours. I mean, to me, that's the place where you put this thing, is you put it right there and if you can do a partnership with them. I mean, you know, the next council that's coming in, this is critical for them. And I wish you guys all the best and love. Thank you very much for coming in and providing us some hope in this. Thanks, really appreciate it.
Counselor Majewski.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Counselor Howe actually asked a bunch of my questions and made a few of the comments as well. I know this is the early stages. Are you guys planning on doing an assessment and seeing what the need is? And if you had a wish list, on that wish list, would it be creating an entirely new center? Be top of that list or using existing space? be top of that list, or using existing space? You don't have to have any answers tonight, but like, maybe a follow-up with council or the new council going forward would be ideal, because then we could have a letter of support or have supporting documentations of our previous applications for these spaces. And then maybe, if you guys have gone through that process in the past, see where the deficiencies were and what we needed to do to actually have a concrete, solid application going forward so that we do get approved. Also, in talks with this childcare, is it going to be just the Zero to 12 program? Or are you going to incorporate early learning, or are these going to be all phased approaches down the road? So say the early learning, helping families and seniors, stuff like that, would they all still be in the same building? Or is that going to be in the schools and maybe in our, for every young society or whatever? Are these programs all under one roof, or are they all over the place? I just want to know a little bit of the structure of how you operate these programs. I'm just kind of unclear, like, some of the places all over, they're, seem like they're kind of different. So I just wanted clarification on that, and then I have one more question, if that's okay.
I can speak to kind of how our programs run. Oftentimes, childcare is our kind of first segue into a community. It's where the opportunity is, where the need is, and that's how we start to work and grow our relationships. So typically, our other programs are predominantly government-funded. So, so we work in partnership to identify what a need and an opportunity are. That saying, there are things like, I'll give you an example of, we have a program provincially called Y Mind, and it's about youth wellness around early intervention, around anxiety, mental health. We work with partners to support that, that program actually being delivered in extensive amount of communities across our province. So predominantly, what we'd be talking about in this context would be, we'd be working around the childcare portfolio. Other opportunities, I think, that would emerge, given as we begin to hear more, learn more about the community of Tumble Ridge and its needs, we certainly don't want to take away or replicate. It's really working in partnership to understand how we might be able to play a role. Typically, those, those programs aren't necessarily co-located with childcare. That saying, we have childcare co-located with our, with our health and fitness center, and as well, we have recreation services. And we are contracted by the district for mandatory to run recreation, so this would be another example. They identified they had a lot of real cyclic nature of recreation, because we want to work with local people, so we'll hire and support local people in the community to deliver recreation. It's co-located with the Integro Community Center that Lynette mentioned. And so, so there are opportunities for kind of hubs of services in that regard, but it was really how, how do we hear what the local needs are and then respond to them intentionally in partnerships?
Maybe just want to ask an early learning thing, if I, if I can. So we don't, early learning is childcare. They're not two different things. They are, so you may have like a time of day for preschool, that's a two-and-a-half-hour program versus a full-day program, are really, it starts like in that infant room there. We're setting up, we're, you know, guiding, ensuring they're meeting their milestones, we're watching their interests and those kinds of things. So for, for, for me, everything we do in childcare is early learning, and then that middle-years piece is really important around connection to friends in the community and to, to healthy adults. Hope that answered that.
Counselor Majewski.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. In this entire presentation, two things that really stood out to me and I was really impressed with is the, that you're looking into extended hours. We are a mine town, not just mining, but oil and gas, windmills, they work in 12-hour days. They leave early, they come home late, just to have that coverage as a peace of mind for them to go and do their job and not have to worry and run home to pay up their child. That's huge, that's another, something offering that's different, as well as the staff benefits and fair wages that you've mentioned. And that's just helping with retention with the childcare workers is just as equal as important as the workers in the community. So to have people stay and be here long-term is very, very good. And then just to follow up with the ECEBC bursaries that you had on the one slide, is that something that you guys help with applications with your staff with, so that you can help them kind of forward to get all the accreditation and long-term states?
Yeah, so first, I want to make sure that I'm not promising extended hours. We're piloting extended hours, and I want to be really cautious, like, I, I just really do. There's going to be a lot of learning, and I'm hopeful. Let me hear you say, I'm hopeful, and I have every, every ounce of me has accounted for the learning, but I just want to make sure that I'm not misrepresenting us. And then, sorry, the ECEBC grants, we also, so they are applied for by the student themselves, but definitely, we have people who help support them in what, what they need to do. The B.C. Jobs Grants is what we've really been super successful in, and those are applied for by the employer. And so the employer makes, so we pay a portion of that, and then the government pays the rest, and there's no cost to the, the student at all. And the great thing about that funding versus the ECEBC funding is it's actually upfront, you know, for the start of course, whereas you're not registered and having to put that out of pocket and hope you get the bursary, like, there's still, there's still some advocates to do around that burs, that, that separate bursary, but there, there are different funding pockets out there for sure to help people become early childhood educators. And just quite honestly, they're still not paid what they, they deserve to be paid, and that's a piece of what I would probably bring forward and a piece of what we're doing on the pilot, is really trying to top up the top, right? Like, how do we, how do we pay really equitably? Like, why would you care if children, I'm parking a mine for 40 y'all, right? Like, like, so just those kinds of things, right? Really, the importance of, of the work they do, I, I think that, I believe, with one thought, it's just the importance of early childhood educators and the work that they do do, and, and really seeing them as the professionals they are, and how do we, as a community of Tumble Ridge, ensure that they know we feel that way?
In further context to the extended hours pilot, we, we couldn't, we couldn't make that financially viable by ourselves, which is why it doesn't exist. And yet, there's such a significant need that you speak to, right? So the way in which this pilot is designed is an investment from Northern Health. So they're supporting us administratively, financially, they're supporting us with additional wages. So someone who comes to work at an extended hours is going to make that much more, because, again, we're asking them to do something that there's other opportunities to, so we need to incentivize that and financially compensate fairly. So there's a financial model that we're excited about testing, but just because I think it's good to have further context, we know that as a not-for-profit, as a charity, we wouldn't be able to do that within just a parent fee models and, and our government funding supports. It's really designed for an employer or external support to, to be able to, to do that work. So.
Any more questions from council?
Okay. Well, I want to thank you guys very much for coming in. I think it's one of the best delegations I've seen, and I think that the, the reason it's such a need in our community is, is because of what has been going on in the north. So not only do we see it an issue with Northern Health or the schools and the mining, but we see it with our own district staff. We, we've seen that, I mean, as councils, we've seen that, we've seen the strain on, on staffing our, our own, our own town with employees, right? So we definitely thank you very much for coming in. Partnership, I think, is a great tool. I think, to me, I think Counselor Howe mentioned it, I think the next council coming in, it's going to be a priority. We've had healthcare as a priority, and, and to me, it's still a priority, but so is, so is childcare for our residents and for the workforce. One thing I'll mention is to know that you were invited to a staff meeting. That just shows that there's already some work or partnership from that side, so that, that is so healthy to see, and the two groups are going to try to butt heads or unsure how it's going to work. They're actually opening their arms, and I, I know the lady behind is the intern, so it's good to see her come to the delegation as well, but to see that you guys have opened up and they've also opened up, I think it makes it easier up here, for the council today and even the next council coming in, realizing the partnerships being built by the two organizations today. And to me, we can just help partnership that from our side and hope to get corporate sponsors on the other side. So thank you very much for coming in.
The last delegation, about 15 minutes.
Yeah. Might be the next one.
Thank you for giving us so much time. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, it's important. Yeah, oh, for sure. We have another delegation for Maxine Van Brappen, paving an evacuation area. Ms. Van Brappen.
What's her name?
Van Brappen.
Come on, Daryl.
Mr. Deely and Mr. Brappen. Sorry, I said, I apologize. I figured people had problems with my last name.
That's why she called you Daryl.
Yep.
He's been calling me Noberry for four years, so.
The floor is yours.
Van Brappen? So I've been asked to speak on behalf of a group of concerned citizens who are looking for support and permission from the council to pave a section of town property, which is the parking area or more the grass area, that's beside the visitor bureau across from the health center, more commonly known as the Star's Landing area. Now, under no question, are they interested in making a helipad, because, as I mentioned in my explanation on DOT, has a ton of regulations on that. This area, when, I refer to the heli, when they do land, I mean, a lot of rock and debris and everything goes up, and it's been pretty bad this year, and as much as the fire department, you know, can hose down down there, there are still larger rocks and pebbles and stuff which become a hazard. So to have this area paved is very, very beneficial for those Star's helicopters that come in. And again, they're not looking to put a helipad in. Instead, they'd like to pave off a 36-foot by 36-foot area, and does make this as an emergency evacuation area. Hence, it's not a helipad, but it does make a safe landing zone for those Stars when they come in. It can be used by the town or any other emergency facility or fire, whatever, if we have fires come through, such as the one that's burning now, as a meeting place in this, in the event that you need an evacuation area. They are not looking for funding from the town for building this. They are willing to do all the footwork to get the funds together for it, to get the planning for it, to get the support from other community, large businesses, such as Canuma, Pattern, and all, and all these groups, to help get them involved and support for it. Again, they're just looking for permission from the town to get this paved, to make it safer. It is not the whole grassed area, area, this area that's going to get primarily the prop wash, so that it's safer for the ambulance crews, the fire crews, anybody else that's using it. As far as for the town is concerned, going there, asking for that is the upkeep for it, clear it off in the wintertime, you know, don't make it a big dump for snow. The other thing is that they would like to put up a sign that designates it, an emergency evacuation area, non-authorized vehicles will be towed. This is important for them not to have this paved area become a parking area. It shouldn't need to be fenced off, nobody wants to fence this area off, it is still public use area, but it is important that this area get cleaned up. We had some fire training, you know, and you don't want to be burning barrels onto dry grass over there, just in case something happens. It's, it's just a safety thing. So we're here looking for permission and support from the town. They're just in the early stages, getting everything put together, but if the town is absolutely, no way you're not going to do this, then they know they, it's off their plate. So being in that early stages, they are requesting, let me say, support and permission from the town to move forward with planning this project and getting this zone paved for this, for this emergency evacuation area.
Okay, cool. So thank you very much, Yojacha. Thank you very much for coming in. One thing I'll mention is we never make a decision on the delegation on the same night. I like the different angle you brought forward. So I, I was the other way around. I did try to do it the other way around, where I tried to do a helipad. As a council, I tried to bring it forward, and there was other discussion, it wasn't even about a helipad, we just talked about it, and there were lots of reasons why we couldn't. Staff reached out, tried to find out about paving it, how we're going to use it, and right away, it became the helipad or an emergency. So I liked the different angle that you've used, but I'll ask some questions in a minute. Counselor Noberry?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for coming in. Short is also very great, so thank you. To the point, I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate how you have solutions and ideas for us to take, because that's, it's important for us to know, what do we got to do? And, you know, you laid a clear path out for us, so I appreciate that. You know, so I spoke with some BCEHS or paramedics in town, and they're, they also were talking about the importance of, of having that helipad in proximity with the health center. They'd love it on the grounds, but across the street is definitely the preferred place to let its central, the, the, the trade-off is short, it's, it's super integral for them to be there. So I absolutely, I thank you for coming, I fully agree that we need to have that space for you. My question would be to staff, and like, do, would we need to rezone that from what it is? Like, what is it zoned at currently? Do we need to change it? Because those are one of those little red tape things that's surely to take care of. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I actually think so. It'd be something like, we'd be looking for a report. I'll ask staff, deputy.
Thank you all, Mr. Curry, as he has previously done some work on this, so.
Mayor and council, excuse me. Yeah, I think the best thing right now is to request a report back. Be happy to get some information for you, look at zoning at all angles. Looking from the helipad, there was a report that was presented to council in 2018 that highlighted, as you said, Deputy Mayor, the issues surrounding a helipad. Excuse me, in this proposal, this may be a workaround for it, but I would have to look at a couple of factors.
Thank you, Dan, thanks for that. And sorry for putting staff on the spot, too. Counselor Howe, I'll look at that.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, too. I mean, this, we had this conversation quite a few times, and we actually had Stars come in and, and give us an idea of if it's appropriate area, if there's anything better that could be done. And one thing I remember coming out of it was lighting. We talked about having lighting in the area that would be beneficial, because wintertime access, you know, got good, good light down there as it is. But the DTR does maintain that area at present time. We definitely keep the snow off of that area. It is known by everybody that that's where Stars lands. Is it officially designated, is it? No, but, or, or maybe not, but the, the avenue that you're going at it with, as an, as an emergency coordination area, I don't know if that's correct. That would be way better left to our fire chief, as we already have emergency areas in town, and we already have a list and everything, and it may be incorporated in it. I, I don't know, but I mean, that's better suited for, for him. What I do love, though, is you're not coming in looking for money, right? You're coming in and saying, we're going to do it ourselves. Like, we'll, we'll go find the money, it's that important to us, so why would we not support you? As long as our, our staff is good with it, and, and that's an area, if that's, what's the difference of, of maintaining it, if it's paved or not paved, is probably easier for us if it's paved, you know? And that's why we went with a paved pump track for maintenance, on the pump track would be easier, and we wouldn't have to fix the pump track, because it's a dirt track. This is going to be good for us not to have to do repairs, and I would think it'd be the same things over there. I don't know, how are you going to come up with the money to do that? Not my concern, I think it's fantastic, you're going to try it on your own and come up with some ideas, but for more, I said, sounds great.
We may have to kind of go through the town if we're going for a grant. We couldn't apply probably for a grant, but the town could. Maybe the economic development officer would be able to kind of be in between, because there, we were told that there is money available through grants, but we know we can't apply that, we would have to, the town would have to apply, but we've done some of the footwork.
Sure, great.
So, I mean, the designation of the emergency evacuation area, care about that is, and how to pave an area and make sure people don't park there. So, you know, unless the town didn't re-designate it as that, just a no parking zone, and that was the sign up, then you wouldn't need to designate it as an emergency evacuation area. It was just trying to find a way to ensure that people do not park there. This is not an overnight camping park. We don't want your RV sitting on this grab, on this nice paved area, right? So unless council had another way, if, if they just figure no parking zone would work, that was why the emergency evacuation area was basically to ensure nobody parks in that area, so it can be used if needed. I know what Rich Rogers comes down there. That would be an authorized thing, council authorizing them to use that, right? In the event of, you know, when he's doing tours for special occasions and things like that, or if town was using something, then he that, or if town was using something, then you are authorizing those vehicles on it. So I don't care what you did. If you wanted to terminate some other thing, so you don't have to rezone it and, you know, can just authorize signage, this is a non-parking zone, unauthorized vehicles be towed away, that works too. So it's not that it has to be an emergency evacuation. It's just that it will not be a heli port. There is a ton of regulations. Like I say, I'm more than familiar with DOT. And we would work on the other side. But like I say, they want to, they want to know that you guys are in support of that and would look at giving commission to do that so they can continue on looking for that funding and they know they're not just wasting their time on, right? It's the chicken or the egg thing right now. And you guys have the chicken or the, whatever you want.
Go ahead, Counsel.
And just for my own, where I'm at, based on the information that I have at this time, I am in support of it. But again, I want to hear from our fire chief in that report and if there's anything coming from that, but I'd, I'd say gangbusters, go for it.
Counsel Noberry?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counsel Howard is correct. I mean, the, we do need to get all the information available to us to make an informed decision. So I'd like to make a request that we make a motion that we request a report regarding the creation of emergency evacuation by the visitor information center.
Counsel Madzinski, discussion. Counsel Madzinski?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My only concern is location. If that's the most ideal, most convenient, maybe at the south end of visitor information center instead of the west end or west side of it. So it's on the backside because it's quite a big, large area back there. It's flat and open and not a, it's a little bit more discreet. An option, just to see. And then for emergency vehicles, it says turn around. It could be easier to zip around instead of just pull in and then put it back in and out or whatever, right? So just in the report, whatever. I, I'm not, not saying, I'm not a naysayer. I think this is a great idea for sure. And I think even if there's more than just a little bit of a letter of support, if there's anything else we should do, maybe that'll come forward at a later date.
Just to consider that backend.
So just hang on a second, just because we have a motion on the floor. It's just council debates and I apologize, but I'll come right back to it. So just in regards to what you're saying, right now, when, when, whether it's Stars that lands or BC Air lands, there, whenever it's on ambulance, during the time the patients are walking, they're not transported. Fire department usually shuts down the roads for them and assesses in regards to bringing in Star Stretcher or BC Airs, just so it's aware. It's not usually at the back. Counsel How?
And, you know, and just like, so staff is aware that there are, you know, counselors are bringing up different ideas. That's kind of what we're going to be looking for in that report. To me, the one thing I've always never really liked about the Stars thing is, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but you guys got to usually shut the intersection down for them to go across. Then you got to utilize, so if you, if our department is out dealing with an accident somewhere else and you got to come in and, and shut that down, we tend to use up a lot of resources trying to do that. Like, to me, if the pad were on site, you know, in the back parking lot and maybe we'll create a new parking lot over there, just any ideas that you guys come up with that you think is more viable. To me, the helicopter landing right in the back parking lot would make more sense to me, so we don't have to shut the intersection down and allow people to park across the road. But anything that they come up with, you know, I, I think it's a great idea. Again, not a naysayer. Let's move forward with it.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion on the floor? Carried. Go ahead. I, sorry, apologize for cutting you off.
No, no, no. If I can just add, so you're talking about the back parking lot of the health center right now. So then my problem with that is then you've eliminated all your parking for the health center. There's nothing there, right?
Yep.
And it's very close to the building. Over on the other side, health center doesn't want the property. Ambulance does have to take people across to that side. I thought you were referring to the back of the visitor's center. If, if you are, I mean, we just never looked it down because we assume that's all visitor center property, right, going through that whole back there. But they're open to just about anything, as long as we have a nice paved, clean surface that can be used for that. Like I said, it doesn't even need to be under emergency evacuation area, but that is kind of the back that we're in, as long as it, you know, it's not a big pad. BC ambulance typically will not land there because it's not a designated pad. Stars will land anywhere, right? So you're, you're still going to have BCM. It's out of the airport. That just covers you for those big emergencies.
So we've had BC Air land here.
Have you?
Yeah, they've landed their heli jets here.
Oh, okay.
Right across, same, same place Stars lands.
Okay, yeah, I've been told by them that they typically won't.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the pot, but they, they do land. I mean, I'm not sure the last time one was in, but they, they came in, I won't say more often than Stars now, but because there's one actually located in Prince George's, they're using them more often if it's, if it's available. It's obviously staying within their, their boundaries, is what they're trying to do, so. So just under one of the comments, what the, the, I mean, hopefully we'll have in the report, but the fire department shutting the road down, that's actually to help land the Stars or the other chopper. So they expect somebody to land them. So, I say, thank you for the, sorry?
Don't they shut the intersection?
Yeah, they shut the streets down. Anytime a chopper comes in, it's shut down, but it's not just our community. Unless you actually have a helipad, they have to shut down a location.
You have to have a 450.
Keep people out of it. But I mean, that'll be in the report anyways and go from there. Any more questions for the delegation? Again, thank you very much for coming in. I think it's great having a different angle going about it, because I tried it the other way. So appreciate people coming in off the street and, yep.
So can this group touch base with somebody going forward, or is this wait then until the October 6th, your next meeting in October, in order to, like, they'll continue to do their research and gather their resources, things like that? Or shall they wait to see what's happening with your reports and?
I mean, I, I can't tell you not to go and start doing some research and stuff like that. From, from council side, we're going to wait for the report to come back from staff, get all the information. We can ask staff if, when they know the report's coming before council, to make sure they reach out to you as a delegation, so that you can be, be present that night when, when the report comes out. And then you can be involved in the delegation. At least you'll hear the debate. Question and answer period is always at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So if something happens, you're not sure, something, can always ask the question at the end of the meeting.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah, for sure. Does that sound fair to the council? Okay. Perfect. Again, thank you very much and great to see residents coming in with ideas. Before we go forward, we have to go back to, um, 3.2. Just want to make sure I have the right one here. So it'll be 3.2, the June 17th, 2022 special meeting of council minutes. Mayor Bertrand tried to speak up or speak in. I guess he has an error or something on it, so to bring that back in. Mayor Bertrand?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just an error under the staff presence, I'm pretty sure. Let's see, it was not present there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. There with the staff that was present.
Tim Thompson wasn't present at that meeting.
CEO. Consent agenda, 7.1. All items, sorry, recommendation. Counsel Noberry?
That all items in the September 6th, 2022 consent agenda be moved for information?
Secondar, Counsel Lehman, all in favor? Carried. Are there any items that council would like to bring forward for discussion? Counsel Noberry?
7.2, TR Day Society Fall Fair request.
Secondar, Counsel Madzinski, all in favor? Carried. Counsel Noberry?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we have a request from the TR Day Society for the use of our porta potties. I can't see, I can't think of any reason why we can't lend them out, so I'd like to make a motion that the DTR allow the use of porta potties to the TR Day Society for the Fall Fair on September 11th and the Halloween Haunt on October 29th.
Before I ask for a secondar, I'm just going to ask staff a question. Do we need to put funds to that? That be ca, be captured in operational funds in cleaning and delivery?
I think we can capture that in operational funds.
Perfect. Take a secondar. Counsel How? Discussion? Counsel Madzinski?
Let's see how many. Two? Is that all with you?
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Carried. Is there anything else from consent agenda that council would like to bring forward? Bylaws, I'm going to have to defer the Tower Ridge Official Community Law and Bylaw number 707, 2022. Counsel Noberry? Secondar? Counsel Lehman? No discussion? All in favor? Carried. Fees and charges by law amendment number 714, 2022. Report from Deputy Director of Corporate Service dated September 6th, 2022, seeking adoption of the fees and charges by law amendment number 714, 2022. Recommendation, please? Counsel Noberry?
That the fees and charges by law number 714, 2022 be adopted.
Secondar, Counsel Madzinski, discussion? All in favor? Carried. 8.3 zoning amendment by law number 716, 2022. A report from Director of Economic Development and Tourism dated September 6th, 2022, seeking first two readings of the zoning amendment by law number 716, 2022. Recommendation? Counsel Noberry?
That the zoning by law number 716, 2022 be read for first time.
Secondar, Counsel Madzinski, discussion? All in favor? Carried. The second recommendation? Counsel Noberry?
That the zoning amendment by law number 716, 2022 be read a second time.
Secondar, Counsel Madzinski, discussion? All in favor? Carried. New business, 9.1 fleet replacement, 2022 Zamboni. A report from the Director of Operation and Infrastructure dated September 6th, 2022, seeking approval to retain the 2009 Zamboni. Recommendation? Counsel Noberry?
The council waives DTR fleet replacement policy PW 14 to allow the district to retain the 2009 Zamboni for its operational need.
Secondar, Counsel How? Discussion? Counsel How?
So, this makes sense to me, that we hang on to the better Zamboni and then get rid of the older one. I just want to make sure that at some point, Phil, we are going to get rid of the older one. Once we're sure that the new one is working, we don't need three Zambonis in the DTR. And to me, I would rather keep that one there rather than have three Zambonis in the DTR. You know, there's some talk in the report about utilizing it for the ice surface down.
Golf course.
The golf course. That's if we're able to do that every year. We don't know that we're able to do that every year. Weather has caused some issues down there in the past. We were able to flood it and whatnot, but to me, I don't want to keep three. So once we know that these are good, I'd rather keep the newer one. But one thing that I think that needs to be pointed out here is that we are replacing a Zamboni that has 40% of its operational hours on, right? The Zamboni that we have in there has 2200 or 24, 26, not even half the amount of hours that it's supposed to be at a replacement. Zamboni recommends you to replace them at 6,000 hours. And I think we do a pretty good job maintaining our stuff. So to me, I think you'd get beyond 6,000 hours with the Zamboni that we have. And I, I don't know how to put this forward, but I know when we talked about replacing this, we asked about hours and we never got that information back. I think that that should be a critical component to any time that we talk about fleet replacement, because there's been concern in this council before about we replace stuff just because it's on the schedule, right? It comes through, oh, well, it's got 13 years on it, so we've got to replace it. Well, do we have to replace it or are we actually utilizing it as much as needed to be utilized in 13 years? So I, I don't know how staff could bring this forward or how we'd do a motion to do it, but I think any time that we are doing that, it should be part of the fleet replacement policy, that we get to see what the hour meter on the unit is, what the expected life of it was, and if there's a huge variation between the two, that we have an explanation of why we are replacing this. Because right now, honestly, I feel a little bit like I've been grifted and that we shouldn't replace the Zamboni in the first place. But it's ordered, it's common. We got an electric one, pretty cool. But to me, I just feel a little bit that we need to change that. That, that needs to get put into policy at some point. I don't know how to do it, but that's where I am with my comments on that. But I'm in support of what we're doing.
Okay. Any more discussion? So I fully support the motion on the floor, but I have the same thing as Counsel. I think it's Counsel How. My understanding from the reason why we're replacing the 2009 Zamboni was maintenance cost due to maintenance cost being high. So I'm assuming that's the same thing with the older one when we replaced it with the 2009. So I guess that'd be a concern. I understand it's, new staff in the positions, replace the positions, but how do we go forward to make sure that doesn't keep happening to us? I guess I feel the same with you and think we need something from staff in regards to that, that we're actually getting the, the right intel to make the decision moving forward on replacement of fleet vehicles or, or that, any equipment. Mayor Bertrand? No? Okay. Any more discussion? So I guess back to staff. Can we just, we have a motion for us, so I'm not prepared to put another one on, but how do we understand in regards, it was brought up by Counsel How and agree with him, regards to third Zamboni? How do we make sure that staff have direction that when we're happy with the new one, that we are moving the third one from our fleet?
That's a good question. I guess with cooperation and collaboration between staff and, and I believe there was some miscommunication with the departments, community center and the public works in the past. And we have already resolved that we, that there would be, you know, communication would be more, more open and more free. There would be more consulting with the people who actually work with the Zamboni at the community center and, and not just left to management in offices in the public works department and by going by a schedule. So, and to Counsel How's point, we can certainly maybe amend our policy to say that some of these pieces of equipment that aren't really, you know, not the same as vehicles that get used all the time, maybe they could be pulled or maybe looked at a little bit differently going forward, so that we can avoid this sort of thing in the future.
I guess my other question with the staff would be, where are we storing three Zambonis? My understanding previously is we're, we have no storage. So do we have enough storage for three Zambonis?
I think we have one at the closet and another one at the community center, at public works. Oh, sorry, I'll ask Mr. Bradley. He can answer that. The Zambonis.
Pardon me, wait. Now, our backup to 93 is outside in the shed. We have 2009 in the bay with hopes of rotating the 93 down to the golf course until we figure out what's going on. We have a full shop down there that we can probably fit it in. And if not, I would assume that would fit in our storage bay.
Mayor Bertrand?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to thank our new staff member for bringing this forward. I think it's a great idea to keep the newer one as backup. And I think it was in the report that the reason for moving the old one, the tractor style one, down to the golf course was to avoid the transportation of the newer style Zambonis down there. There, there's possibility for, you know, damage or, or whatever, or tear on that to transport. So I am in support of keeping that old tractor down at the golf course. I mean, as long as we have a place to put it. Certainly an easier option when there's equipment at the site to, to put the rank in when it's possible. We certainly have had unpredictable winters over the years, but if there is equipment there, it, it doesn't take a whole team to coordinate a, a transport. So thank you very much to staff for bringing this forward and I'm in agreement with it.
Discussion? Okay, call them, call the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. 9.2 fleet replacement, 22, unit 59, 1999 car hauler. Report from Director of Operations and Infrastructure dated September 6th, 2022, to seek approval to retain unit 59, the 1999 car hauler. Recommendation? Counsel Noberry?
The council waives the DTR fleet replacement policy PW 14 to allow the district to retain the 1999 car hauler.
Secondar, Counsel Madzinski, discussion? Counsel How?
Where are we with on the new trailer? Have we ordered it? Can we return it?
Ms. Torvald?
Mr. Bradley?
Thank you. Any more discussion? Thank you. Any more discussion? Counsel How?
No, I just, I think that's a neat idea with, you know, the goes back to staff and says, can we revamp this thing? And how much do we use it? You know, do we actually use it that much? And, you know, yeah, it's 99, it still works. Throw some paints and fenders, a little bit of welding to it, get a little training, some guys on, uh, in in the public works. It's a great idea. Way to save us money. Good job, Jake.
Any more discussion? Yeah, I totally support it. Again, thanks to staff. I mean, you're saving money, seeing a way to to save quite a bit of it and do some repairs to the existing one. So good on staff. Okay, call the question, all in favor? Carrie, are opposed? Are you opposed, Mayor Bertrand? Carrie.
I do have a question, hello Deputy Mayor.
Go ahead, Mayor Bertrand?
Just wondering about asking staff about our asset management poll, our program. I know, uh, you know, over the last few years, we've been putting together inventories and really nailing down a schedule over the next 20 years for replacements. And I'm wondering if we can get an update on that and bring that forward to a next meeting or a meeting in a few weeks.
Okay, Mr. Torvald?
I think it would give us opportunity to discuss policies about, you know, it's, uh, there has been a lot of, um, post-game discussion around our assets and replacing our assets, not only on the council's side, but also outside. So I think it certainly needs a revisit.
Do you want to put a motion on the floor, Mayor Bertrand, to bring that forward to a meeting?
They'll move.
Seconder, Counsel Norberg, discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Okay, 9.3 the Tumble Ridge Community Table Terms of Reference. Report from the acting CAO, interim CAO, dated September 6th, 2022, to present to council for approval of terms of reference for the Tumble Ridge Community Table. Recommendation? Counselor Lehman?
That council adopts the Tumble Ridge Community Table Terms of Reference as presented.
Seconder, Counsel Norberg, discussion? Okay, call the question, all in favor? Carrie. Schedule of meetings. Anything from Counsel? Counsel Norberg?
Um, did we, were we able to get a pre-council programming workshop, workshop, um, planned? Were we able to get anybody for that?
Mr. Torvald?
Sorry?
Like the introduction to local government, like, like elected officials training?
We didn't get one for pre, but there will be a bit of a workshop information session for candidates once they have, uh, once the nomination period is is closed and we have candidates.
Counsel How?
Uh, just correct me here for if I'm mistaken, but were you not referring to once candidates are elected that we were going to have, you know, kind of a training session for them? Was that what you were referring to? No?
Counsel? No, um, well, before the last election, there was like, um, a workshop for candidate hopefuls to sort of tell them what, basically telling them what what their expectations would be for elected officials, right? Like, what does that look like? And I know that it was, um, eye opening for a few people who were interested in, uh, running for council. And some people that actually changed their mind afterwards because it wasn't what they thought.
Counsel How?
Yeah, so I remember we had discussions and I don't know where that went with bringing in someone like, uh, Christine Benty or something like that for the next council that's coming in, already have it set up and booked. We were talking about doing this a long time ago before we.
Yeah, actually.
Booked now, but.
Yeah, actually, but I'm not sure who they're going to use, but I believe we actually have a a policy that have that, that staff will have that done. Mr. Torvald? I'm not saying you have it booked, but I believe they have, we have a policy that states that every every election year that.
I'm sorry, counsel, I'm not aware of such policy. And due to capacity, staff, I'm not able to pull together a workshop.
No, I totally, totally understand that.
But there is a an orientation session, uh, planned for after the election. For Dawson Creek, it's a regional one where all the the big players that get together and, and, you know, it's a two day one for staff and council.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, anything else, Counsel, or Mayor Bertrand?
Is that the only orientation plan then? Is that regional one? Deputy Mayor?
That's what I'm hearing from staff, yeah.
Yes, we can do a, depending on the need, uh, we could do a local one with our own council and staff.
I I know you guys are capacity in full and and working and and you also have the election coming up. But I believe there was actually a motion made that every election year that that would, there would be one. By the district, but for council, that's elected, all of council, not just new elected council members, but it was for all of council. Just when you have an opportunity, I'm not saying to book one. If we have an opportunity, just look that up. If we don't, let's. Have to be, I understand the capacity there. Uh, anything else in regards to schedules? Anything from staff on scheduling? Any notice of motions? Okay, councilors' business? Counsel Norberg?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we we had our second meeting of our, uh, childcare task force. Um, and I just want to update council on we're we're still meeting, we just met for the first time. And, um, um, we haven't, not much of plans have changed. We're still waiting to, um, get that survey out to Tumble Ridge, um, from the SD 59 to get a good, clear understanding of, um, what the need is. Because it seems like for the YMCA, that's what they're waiting on, um, SD 59 is waiting on. So, you know, with our table, we have quite a bit of industry partners there. So hopefully we can get as much reach with that as possible. Um, and we're still trying to look at building that community capacity in zero to three spaces, right? Like that we need, that's an immediate need right now. We need people. You can go out and get like a correspondence course, 20 hours, and you can be a licensed childcare provider. You can get grants, you can have multiple children, and it's available online. So we're going to try and get the information out there to our community through some booths as well as generate an interest list, um, for people interested in news about what's happening. So so plugging away at, uh, at our crisis here.
Thank you very much. Counsel Majinsky?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, just last week for the TRBA, we had Crew Two come in to do ground truthing, GPSing and flying of our trail network on the ridge. So, um, it is a big undertaking when they came in. Uh, we had given them our, given them our master plan and the layout did not match in order to come up with the proper layout. So we actually had to revisit the layout and the design. And so it's going to be scaled back into phases. So they're going to give us a overview of what they want to do. They've already got some adult trail, downtail, um, and their hopes is actually to actually clear this fall, have them ready to go. So I've also talked to Duncan McKeller with Community Forest. And I do have to have some more discussions with him because he gave us a lot of the information of the GPS thing and stuff like that and the line work. Um, and maybe we could have a partnership there with the virtual timber if there is any. It'd be minimal, but I don't know. We'll have to talk to him about that. And then also with Community Forest, Dr. Duncan, there will no longer be any, uh, tree clearing on that ridge with the fire mitigation. So that's huge because he actually was a big proponent in canceling that because he said it was not worthwhile. There wasn't that much, it's a lot of deciduous trees. Um, there wasn't a lot of, uh, reasoning for that fire to come burn downhill towards the community or go the other way. And it didn't make sense in the reasoning that they had proposed to have that. And that would have been an obstacle that we would have had to conquer as well to having a ten year old ridge. So, uh, rec sites and trails have been contacted. They they're actually here, did a site visit as well, and everything's looking good. So we're moving forward slowly, but, uh, yeah, and and we're actually going to be going forward with more funding this year, so.
Counsel How?
I'd just like to add a little bit of background there for council as well. So, uh, I've used the arena since the new heat recovery plant was put in. And I heard back from some people in hockey camps and the junior camp that was here. And they say this is the best ice they've ever skated on. So the quality of the product that is is back in our arena is fantastic. I don't know about the mechanical side of it, how that's all going for our staff. But what we have left with, we have a better product than what we started with, and it's going to save us, I don't know, what is it, $80,000 a year, something like that, like, something like that. But anyways, that it's, uh, the product is excellent in there. There's two additional pipes in the arena. They ran them very inconspicuously up through the top and you can hardly see them in the arena to go all the way over to the boiler room or whatever and did a good job. It's nice, clean, neat, so just a bit of a positive note, uh, one project that went pretty good from what I can see.
Okay, anything else with councilors' business? Uh, Mayor Bertrand?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just curious on UBCM, if we've gotten confirmations on meetings?
We have no confirmations as of today. We are still waiting. I was in and talked to Mr. Torvald this afternoon. And we are still awaiting confirmations from the UBCM. So at this point, we have no meetings scheduled.
Did they give us a timeline at all? This is our last meeting beforehand, so again, thank you very much for your role. Curious on our topics and our meetings.
Yeah, um, I don't believe they've given staff timeline. I mean, I believe staff expect to hear from them last week. I know Ms. Torvald reached out again today. Um, but she has heard nothing back when I was in this afternoon. And I see her shaking her head that she still has not heard back. Um, so I know I had that discussion today with her that, you know, we could be going to the UBCM with no meetings. And that's including Northern Health with no response.
I'm sure it'll come last minute, but just a reminder, how many ministries did we apply to? It was quite a long list, was it?
Yeah, it was long. 10, I, it was more than 10.
You applied to all of them. Okay, thank you.
Anything else from council? Question and answer here. Do you have any questions, Mr. Torvald? Okay. Resolution to close, a recommendation. Counsel Norberg?
As presented? No, we have to be written, it has to be written out, excuse me. That the September 6th, 2022 meeting be closed to the public in accordance with the Community Charter, Section 91 CE and J as follows, labor relations and other employee relations. E, the acquisition, disposition or expropriation of land or improvements if the council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality. J, information that is prohibited or information that if were presented in a document would be prohibited from disclosure under section 21 of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Protection Act.
Seconder, Counsel Lehman, all in favor? Carrie, five minutes of recess.